Today's Monday, February 8th, 2021. Today, we have our first budget workshop in preparation for our FYI 2022 budget. We will hear from staff regarding our revaluation, FYI 2021 mid-year projections, and FYI 2020 year-end revenue projections. I will ask the deputy county manager, Michelle Lancaster, to introduce our topics. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This afternoon, as Chairman Helms just shared, we have three topics that you'll be hearing from staff regarding. These are what we really consider some of the foundational blocks to how we're building our FYI 22 recommended budget. So you're going to hear about the revaluation, our mid-year projections for where we are currently in the FYI 21 budget, and then Beverly will close with our year-end results for FYI 20. If you heard the audit report last week, this is really the finality of that report in terms of the financing components. These are all important topics for how we build our budget and really are for your information and knowledge. There's no action to be taken today by the board in this workshop. I do want to really stress to you that these workshops that we've scheduled over the next several months on the second Mondays of the month are really for your information and your opportunity to learn about topics that we will bring to you, but also if there are things that you would like to learn more about or have further questions about, if you would please share those with either myself, the manager, or any of our staff so that we can get those scheduled. That's really how we want to use these opportunities. So again, with those items, I will kick this off by introducing Van Harrell, our tax administrator, who will talk about the revaluation process.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes this afternoon. This is a topic that's near and dear to everybody's heart right now, as you can imagine. If we wanted to come back to the board, and I think we told you back in October, we'd come back mid-November timeframe to provide you an update with where we are related to the revaluation process. We have finished all but about 90 parcels in the county, and those are minor changes that had to be made. And this is, and the numbers we want to talk about, they're strictly market value. This is not a sales value. We have to go back now and apply the tax relief components to the parcels that have qualified. So we have to go back and do that part of the process. But what you'll see today is strictly related to market value of real estate only. Just to give you a quick recap, our last revaluation was 2015. That was a 10% reduction in the tax base coming off of the 2008 reappraisal and the economic decline that was subsequent to that. The DOR notified, Department of Revenue notified us in 2018 that we had to do a reappraisal within three years, which is 2021. The sales ratio dropped below 85%, and the number there is 84.8. That was March of 2018. In the 2020, our final sales ratio was 69.8%. We had a significant drop in that rate over the last couple of years, and you'll see some of the data related to that as we move through this. Keep in mind, the sales ratios are based on sample studies. It's not every parcel in the county being accounted for. It's where the Department of Revenue is selecting certain sales and comparing that to our sales values. It's just, it's based on a sample. Contributing factors to the growth that we've experienced, I'm just going to highlight a few things here. The Charlotte metro regional growth rate is 17.5% from 2010 to 2019. That's the 10th fastest growth rate in the country for a metropolitan region. Additional costs related to increasing property values is the cost of construction and the market volatility there. This was some information I pulled from the National Association of Home Builders about a week and a half ago. In September 2020, it was $950 per thousand feet, thousand board foot for, as far as construction costs. In November, that had dropped to 550. December was 650, and it was back up to 900 in January. So you can see, they've got a lot of movement and fluctuation in the cost of building materials, which impacts the values of property as well. Union County is the second fastest-growing county in the region. The Charlotte Regional Business Alliance has a graph, it's an interactive graph on their website, that shows the counties in the whole region and the growth rates that they experience. And the only county outpacing us is York County, South Carolina. These numbers here, based, and it was dated from 2020 to 2050, were projected in Union County to pass 300,000 people by 2030 and 420,000 by 2050, based on the data that they have on their site. Additional contributing factors to the increase in the real estate valuations, obviously COVID has had an impact, but not what a lot of people would think. People have been buying more houses, looking to upsize, some looking to downsize. A lot of people working from homes that need that additional space for office spaces for the, to stay separated from their children while the children are at home in school. A lot of that has also contributed to this. The median national listing price has gone up 13.4% in 2020 to $340,000. And this is all coming from Realtor.com as well. Price per square foot for residential properties increased 15.9% in 2020. Year-over-year, from 19 to 20, for our region, there's been a little more than, right around 13% decline in new listings year-over-year. The median listing price increased by 6.9%, which also, based on some information I was given Friday, one of the indexes that our appraisal group looks at is the Case-Shiller Index. If you go back to 2015, it shows a 6.5% increase annually from 2015 to 2021 in their index. So all of this is in line with where the market is. The median days on market declined by 15 days, which means properties are selling quicker. We've all heard stories about people putting their house on the market today and having a contract tomorrow. So things are moving quickly, which also results in a steep decline in active listings in the available inventory of real estate. I think the biggest thing from a property tax standpoint that's a contributing factor to this is a lack of a consistent reappraisal cycle. We need to make sure from, for a county our size and the growth that we experienced, we make sure we look down the future at getting on a consistent four-year cycle, as long as market indicators dictate that. So progress to date, we have reappraised, revalued, whichever term you want to use there, 104,000 parcels. We, that is there, we're continuing to grow there within that 16, 1700 parcel per year rate. If you look at the total valuation, market value of property in Union County is going up 35.6%. The typical residential increase, or the total residential increase, rather, is 38.5%. The total commercial increase county-wide is 15%. Of that residential increase, a component of that is our vacant land valuations as well. That piece of that, the values on that land went up 24, just under 25% during this reappraisal cycle.
I think I want to point out that 38.5 is not a tax increase.
Exactly.
Because it's being misconstrued in various outlets, but that is just the appraisal value.
That is the market value of the land. Again, absent of any adjustments for tax relief that, for properties that already qualify that. Just some categorical year-over-year changes, so you can see this at a more granular level. Residential agricultural valuation in 2020, again, this is based on 2015 values because that was the last reappraisal, was 20.9 billion. That number is increasing to 28.9 billion in 2021. Commercial industrial is going from 2.9 billion prior year to 3.3 billion in 2021. Your total is tabulated there at the bottom, so we've gone from a real estate standpoint, a market value of $23.8 billion to just over $32 billion. Significant growth for Union County. It's just indicative of the patterns that we're seeing. Again, that rural land valuation is a component of the residential agricultural total, but it increased from 1.2 to 1.5 billion as well. If you look at the median sales ratios, that was a number I gave you at the end of 2020 with 69.8%. With the new values in place, our sales ratio is 99.86%. Can't get much better than that. It's ideally right around 100% is where you want to be. Some counties argue you want to be lower than that, so you have room, but we, our software, the analysis that we did, and the values that we put in place based on schedule of values that were adopted, we were sitting at 99.86. Just one thing that's not shown here, had Phil run some studies, just sales ratio studies, we looked at three different periods. So we looked at 2019 and all of 2020, and for those two years, we're just slightly above 100%. But if you look at 2020 specifically by itself, as you want to, when you do these studies, you want to look at the most recent year, you're at 99.86. So I had him look at just the last quarter of 2020 to show, see where we've gone since the schedule, we took the snapshots, set the schedule of values, and see where the things sit within. Going, based on sales in the last part of 2020, we are sitting at 97% of market, so we're already 3% under if you look at that one quarter. If you look at the whole quarter, at the whole year, we're right on market. So it's going to move rapidly, and that goes back to that need for consistent reappraisal cycles. If it continues this growth, we're going to be right back here again two or three years from now. Couple of statistical measures here. One, two of the things that the state looks at, and we look at from an internal standpoint, is coefficient of dispersion and the price-related differential. Those are measures of central tendency that show uniformity within the appraisal process. The range that's acceptable is anywhere from 5 to 25, depending on if it's an urban, for the coefficient of dispersion, your range, acceptable range is 5 to 25, depending on whether you're urban, rural, and mixed, a lot of residential neighborhoods. So we're kind of in that whole component there. In 2020, at the end of 2020, our COD was 18.17, which is still acceptable. With the new values in place, we're at 5.6. So we're right in line with, almost as good as you can get from a ratio perspective with that. The price-related differential, you can see it didn't change a lot. That measures the level of progressivity or regressivity from an appraisal standpoint related to more valuable property. So if your high-end properties are over-appraised, your ratio number is going to be lower there. If they're under-appraised, it's going to be higher. And that range is .98 to 1.03, and we're sitting at 1, which means we're right on the market where we need to be with that, for the values on those type of properties. Our median home value in Union County is, in 2020, was $196,700, and 2021, that will increase to 293,377. And the typical square footage for our medians are 2,100 square feet. You can see the price per square foot there went from 92 to 137. Here's, the next two charts are showing the municipalities in the county, and they, the percent changes for the municipalities themselves range anywhere from 25 to 58% and everywhere in between. Monroe and, I believe it is, Hemby Bridge both came in around 58%, and Marvin had the, while it's significant change, they had the lowest, the lowest level of change at 25.69%. Yes, sir?
Just for me and anybody, the 2020 value really means the last valuation amount. It doesn't mean what it was worth in 2020, but what we were using to figure ad valorem taxes.
That's correct. It's actually based on 2015.
Yeah, because, you know, I was looking at the previous slide, and somebody's going to think, how did my house go up $100,000?
I think on that slide, I'll step back.
Well, you've got 2015, 2020, but go back one, and you'll, yeah, 196 to 293.
Right.
And that's what the last valuation had been using for that house value.
Yes, sir. So that is a six-year-old median value.
And it had continued 16, 17, 18, 19.
Yes, sir.
20. Okay.
So the municipal totals are in line with the county. Each pocket's going to be a little differently. One thing that's not on this chart that I just got about an hour ago, the unincorporated, we looked at that, similar to municipality. The unincorporated part of the county, the increase was 34.83% total, which is right in line with the total county. A little lower than the total county number, but it's right in line with the same information. Commercial valuations by municipality, they range anywhere from, Waxahaw won the award on this one, they increased their commercial valuation with a lot of the growth they've had, which, by 26%. Most everywhere else is in the mid-teens. We had one decline, that was Unionville. So I'm not sure, Phil, we have any information on what that?
It's just a handful of parcels, not a lot of large values. It's largely appreciation of people.
Public information, campaign recap. We'd like to thank our wonderful folks over here for helping us out quite a bit. They helped us produce the video. We've been doing web-based Q&amp;A sessions. We did, we had one scheduled here in the building. Actually, no one attended that, but we've been getting the word out. We've spoken at 14 different municipalities at this point. We've, Chamber Commerce, Rotary Club here in Monroe, we're scheduled for Rotary in Waxahaw, and also the Ag Advisory Board, and some of the Ag meetings are coming up as well. We're working with Andrew Balkin to get this full schedule of those meetings laid out for everyone. Website and branding, we've got the dedicated website and some stuff I'll show you here in a moment that we've launched or will be launching for taxpayers to utilize as they review their assessment notices. Social media has been utilized heavily. We've done radio interviews with Wixie and a couple of newspaper articles in the Inquirer Journal, and of course, the civic group meetings as well. Just to recap our appeals process, there's five stages to the appeals process. There's an informal review, which, at which the level, roughly 95% of our appeals are handled there. From there, they go to the Board of Equalization Review, and then on to the Property Tax Commission and Court of Appeals and Supreme Court if necessary. And again, we'll reiterate that the local level, BER, and the Property Tax Commission, taxpayers can represent themselves. They do not have to hire an attorney to do so. So we will work with taxpayers through that process. Just to briefly touch on the Board of Equalization Review, you appointed the chairman as Randy Adcock at your last meeting. The other members are Dutch Hardison, Mike Raitt, Mark Ashcraft, and Ray Brooks. They have all served multiple terms on the board and understand their duties and the processes related to that. There is a BER orientation tentatively scheduled with the Department of Revenue in March. It's something that the state is trying to put together for counties that are going through a reappraisal cycle. We've got commitments from at least two, if not three, of the current board members to attend that. We plan on the board convening April 6th, which is the first, I believe it's the first Monday in April, and then their expected adjournment date is May 27th of 2021. Doesn't mean we will be done by that point. They will continue meeting through the summer, depending, possibly depending on the level of appeals, but typically it's, in a reappraisal year, it's September, October timeframe. I think Mecklenburg, I heard Mecklenburg County just finished up their appeals from their 2019 reappraisal in January of this year. So if we're done by October, we'll be happy. Couple of things here online that we've launched for taxpayers. We are launching an online appeal form, and that's just a screenshot here to the right. And when they type in that parcel number, and I can actually link to that and show you how that works. When you get your notice, you have your parcel number on the notice, and so they will have everything they need to fill this form out. The parcel numbers will populate automatically as you type it in. They will eliminate the ones that are not applicable to what you're typing. Once you select that parcel, it automatically populates to property address and the owner's information. And from there, they can put, if it's the taxpayer that's appealing, they'll just put their name in there and their contact information and the reasons for their appeal, and we'll reach out to them and work through that process. Bill Laney from our IT department did a good job of setting this forum up for us this year. The second piece is a third-party software that we brought to the board back in September, October timeframe to purchase to assist taxpayers and staff with the appeals process. It's a product called Comper. Some, you may be familiar with the community snapshot portion of the county website that's got inspection data, planning data, tax data for specific parcels. It's the same company that's doing that, and we just got the test site sent to us this week. We'll, just to show you an idea of what this is, you can, from the beginning, I'm missing some resolution here. Go back to the property search, and I'll just use, you can put your address in. Do the search, and it will show you all the sales in your neighborhoods. All these yellow boxes here are sales in this particular neighborhood with the red box being the subject property. From this point, the taxpayers can select properties that are like theirs. This is a comparable sales analysis tool is what this is from, based on a lot of similar data that appraisers use. They can select the comparable similar to their property and print out a report that they can provide us and they can use to review their appraisal. And if they see that something's out of line, they can bring us that documentation and show us, and we can review that with them and figure out what we, what kind of adjustments have any that we need to make. But we felt like this would be a tool that would be, it's inexpensive from an investment standpoint, but it could save a lot of time and money on the county side as well as the taxpayers' efforts as well. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Would you explain for the, for our benefit and the public's benefit, the advantage of a more regular appraisal cycle?
It keeps equity established in the tax base. When you have the wide swings in valuations, you're in a growing area, and you've got rapidly moving markets. So at that, at that level, it just allows us to maintain those consistent valuations and keep the market, capture the market as it's developing, instead of waiting six to eight years and having to do a large increase or even decrease at the same time. I mean, we, it's, we're of the opinion that if you're in an up or down cycle, keep that valuation consistent, and it's all going to even out in the end. And it's, that's why you see a lot of counties moving to two- and three-year cycles, or attempting to move to two- and three-year cycles. I think Yaston County, I think their next one is going to be a three-year cycle. Wake and Durham, and I'm not sure about Mecklenburg, but I know Wake and Durham are talking about two-year cycles, just to stay on top of everything that's happening there and the growth in those areas. So it's more about the equity and making sure people are assessed fairly and that the property tax burden is distributed fairly. The biggest factor category we can point to where that inequity is known is in the public service companies, because once you drop below 90% or you go above 110%, whichever way the market's going, they get a break, and the other taxpayers don't get to experience that. So I think it's just more about maintaining that equity component.
Do you have a recommendation for a multi-year cycle for Union County?
I think our recommendation would be four years. We did that in 2004 and 2008, and if you look in our previous presentation, we had the slide that showed the sales ratio trends through that time period. Those increases were 12 and 14% instead of 25, 30%. So.
Man, I know I learned when you first presented to us, this revaluation was ordered by the State Department of Revenue, not by the commissioners, wasn't it? Because our sales figures were way above what the recorded values were.
Yes, sir.
So I didn't know, but I think it'd be good if you explained it in the quickened version of when it gets 15% either way out of Kilter, we have three years to do it.
Yeah, with, based on current statute, when, if you're 15% below market or 15% above market, we're below at this point. In 2012, we were above. So we triggered on both sides of this, where the state has told us we had to do this. Based on your population size, if you're greater than 75,000 people, and you're beyond that threshold, and that simply means that your tax values are 15% lower than what the sales values are for the time period reviewed by the Department of Revenue. Once that happens, you'll get that notice from the state, and you have to do that reappraisal within three years.
Also, I'd like for you to explain, the revaluation is just on the residential and commercial property. You know, we have personal property tax, and we have automobile tax. Now, they're all the same rate, but the only thing that's going through the revaluation basically is the real estate.
That's correct. Motor vehicles and personal property are valued annually. Every year, you list your personal property. We apply the schedule of values to that, that's determined by the state. Motor vehicles are valued annually when you renew your tag. You pay your taxes with that, and that value's established every year. But this, this process is strictly related to real estate.
But when we look at tax value, we include all of those estimates.
When you're looking at tax base for the budget estimates, it's inclusive of everything.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, chairman members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information with you.
Did we discuss the three-minute limit?
Starting from I left my seat when I got here. I guess I'm the only one that loves to talk about budgets. All right, let's see. Two minutes and 58 seconds, starting now. Let's see, okay. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and discuss my best estimates for the general fund budget through the end of FYI 21. We're going to talk about general fund revenues, then specific points of the revenue, then expenses, and then talk about both together, and how, the position that puts us in for the end of FYI 21, and also leading into FYI 22. And there's, I have five slides, so I'm going to be the, be to the point. Beginning with ad valorem tax and fees, we know that's the largest source of revenue that we have, and we're on track, fortunately, to collect 100% of our budget with ad valorem. In FYI 21, we didn't quite meet that threshold. We collected 99%, and I'm optimistic that we can meet the 100% threshold in FYI 21. And on the next slide, we'll have a little more information about that. With, for current sales tax, we are trending higher than our COVID-influenced budget, which we, if we go back a few months, we remember that when we adopted this budget, we decreased the budget for sales tax by 4.5%. And that was based on kind of the common knowledge and common thought during March and April of last year, when we were very early in the pandemic period, and we just weren't sure where things were going to land or how things were going to shake out. And so we went with a 4.5% decrease from the previous year of the sales tax budget. We're very fortunate in Union County that we've exceeded that, and we're performing much better than that for this year, and that'll help us leading into next year, too. We have, I have a slide on that that I'll go into more detail also. Intergovernmental revenue, we are coming in close to the budget, trending at 97% collections as a group. That includes unrestricted, restricted, federal and state in the items. In those, those areas, that's our, our, we have our Medicaid whole harmless revenue as well as our lottery funding and other, other revenue items we get from other, other agencies. We're on track to collect about 97%, which is on trend with where we have been in the past. Some of that is human services revenue also that is offset by expenditure that they have in their budget. And so if they don't fully expend their budget, then we don't get that reimbursement. So that's why that, there's a bit of a fluctuation there. Non-enterprise charges for service, this area is where we collect revenue from parks and rec, library, ag services. We know that because of the pandemic, again, there's a lot of usage that is not happening in those areas, and so as a result, the revenue coming in is a little bit lower in those areas. Fortunately, in that category, they're lumped together with building code and environmental health, and they've seen an increase in their service demand also. So we have a bit of an offset there that's helping that category and their collections. Other revenues is, but I'm sorry, investment revenue is, I'm expecting that we'll fully collect the, what we budgeted there. That budget of 740,000 is, was cut in half during FYI 21, again, because of uncertainty around COVID. So I'm optimistic that we'll fully achieve that, if not a little bit more going into FYI, ending FYI 21, and we'll see how that plays out for FYI 22 as things continue to develop around markets and investments that the county has. Interfund revenue, that's a revenue that we, we receive from, a one-time revenue we received from the schools. In the budget, there was a capital project that we funded. In the budget, there was a capital project that we, we, we funded and we, we needed to receive that back from them. So it's a one-time item that, that will not continue into FY '22, but that is, we have received that in '21. And also we've received additional funding for CARES Act in that category also. So that, that, that combined is the 1.44 million dollar budget, which will be fully collected by the end of the year. Other revenue, the majority of that is from our hospital rental income through Atrium. And there's a portion of that, which is the facility rental at the Ag Center, which we know also because of COVID restrictions and the lack of large group meetings, we're going to, we'll be, we'll be receiving less revenue from the Ag Center in FY '21 and hopefully we can, we can reverse that in FY '22. Also, for fund balance appropriated, we, we budget fund balance to offset the obligations for the business incentive grants that we have because at times we, we partner with, with businesses to invest in the county, which they do a wonderful job. At times they, they don't come in and ask for their, their payment, even when they meet the thresholds, for whatever reason, we don't end up paying it out. So we budget that for revenue and you'll see on the expenditure side, there's a portion that doesn't get paid out for, for how, for whatever reason that, that happens. But we do have that budget as a, as a revenue there. Then this slide talks about ad valorem. The dark bars represent the actuals from the past over years for ad valorem revenue. The dark orange line is the percent collection in, in those years as compared to budget. And the dotted line is just the basic trend to see what, what the trajectory has been for this, this line of revenue. Current ad valorem collections are slightly ahead of previous years through December 31st. So this is a mid-year projection, so it's through the end of December. I'm, I'm optimistic that that's going to get us from 99% collections for ad valorem in FY '20 to 100% in '21, if not a little bit over, that would be, that'd be great. We've, we've collected through December 31st, 81.8% of the budget as compared to 81.5% last year. So we're hoping that, that little bit will get us over the, the hunt, plus a little more that came after the holidays. And again, the mid-year projection indicates that we would collect 100% of that ad valorem revenue in the general fund. Sales tax, we're going to drill down a little bit on sales tax. Again, we decreased the budget by negative 4.5%. Our actual collections are exceeding that. Again, it's a bit tricky because there's a three-month lag from when a dollar gets spent in the county and when it goes through the required phases, back to the state, analyzed, posted, comes back to us as revenue. So when we look at the numbers through December 31st, we really only had three months of actuals and then a little bit more in January that I've also taken into consideration. But the, this projection is based on what we've collected to date. If you remember back to when we, when I presented to you in December, we talked about sales tax and we showed that the, the actual budget that we have, which was, we know is artificially reduced, we've overcollected that budget each month and that trend is continuing. And so if it continues, then we will, the expectation to overcollect will continue as well. We know that we're, we're still in a volatile environment, things could change. And if that trajectory changes, if our collections come, come in below budget, then they would eat away at any expected savings that we would have or any expected over collections that we would have. The, again, the mid-year projection indicates 106.4%. If you were, our actual collection rate, the percent growth year over year, the past two years, has been 6.2%, 6.3%. So that 6.4% from the actuals in the prior year is really just the general growth of what a normal expectation would be. So even with the pandemic, we've collected, we're on a, a normal trajectory to collect sales tax at a normal, normal rate. And we benefited as compared to the prior year and the state has as well. The state has collected 8.2% above their, their allotment from FY '20 and we've collected 12.3% above our, month over month of our previous year as well. So the state's doing better than expected and we're doing better than expected and we're doing better than the state too. Now we'll look at expense. Our major expenses, of course, our employee compensation. We typically have some capacity there where under spending based on vacancies. I'm projecting now that we will, we'll spend 97.2% of employee compensation, which are salaries, and then also about 98.2% of benefits. This is a little more than we have in the past year or so. Part of it is driven by the hiring freeze that was implemented in about April of last year to go through the end of FY '20 and to continue through December, the December 31st of FY '21 to make sure that we reduce our expenses going into, you know, the, the pandemic to, to make sure we could, we could get through. And so we're seeing a little bit tighter expectations for total expense for compensation of benefits. The, if we look at the operational cost, we, I'm projecting we would underspend some in operational expense. That's not uncommon. There's normally a, a portion of operational expense and capital outlay that gets rolled forward to the next budget year if there are, if there are significant funds for, for projects or major purchases that get delayed because of timelines or availability of vendors or, or the other things, that normally gets pushed forward into the next year's budget. And so it's not uncommon that we would have a little bit of underspending there. One thing to note is that we, we've reduced the total operating cost budget within the general fund by about $1.4 million or 5% since FY '20. And that's a, that's a result of the, the target-based budget process that we've been using over the past two to three years to give departments a target to build their budget to based on expected revenues for that year as well. So they've been reducing their budget, their operating budgets year over year to about a $1.4 million. Contracts, grants and subsidies, we, that underspending is again, this is where we kind of connect the dots with the business incentive grants. If we, if we don't, if they don't request payment for their, for their, the agreement, then we, you know, we don't pay them. We, we're lenient to, to make sure that we give them time and notice, but sometimes they, they don't request the payment that's, that's, that they're, they're due. And that's why there's underspending in that line. And again, the interfund transfer that you see there, that's Pago. In FY '21, we budgeted about 3.4 million in Pago to the, to our capital projects. And that was, that was a bit lower than we have in the past where we have budgeted transfers to other funds as well. So we limited that in FY '21 also. The fund balance contribution there at the bottom was a one-time net benefit from the, from the retraction of OPEB trust payments because of some overpayment over the past few years in our, to the OPEB trust. We pulled that out and put it into the general fund to help us with our fund balance in '21. So that'll be a, you won't see that reoccur in FY '22. This is the two pieces of the puzzle. On one slide, at the top, you'll see revenues, history over the past three years, the expected spent, collection on the far right with the total expected collection of revenues at 98.2% for the general fund. And then for expenditures at the bottom, you'll see the bottom right, expected expenditure of 96%. So the difference between expected, expected collections for revenues and expected expense for total expenditures is $3.8 million. So that's a general projection of where I think we'll be at the end of the year when we, when we stack revenues on top of expenses, we'll have a net, a net positive of 3.8 million that would roll into fund balance. And then if there's, whatever the budget roll amount would be, the carry forward to the next fiscal year would, would come from that amount to general funding in the next fiscal year. So that's a, that's a positive projection and very, very, compared to what we were, what our thoughts were six to nine months ago when we were entering the pandemic and we thought our sales tax was going to fall through the floor, I think we, we've, we've done quite well, especially when you consider that in FY '21, when we adopted the budget, we adopted 1% growth in revenue and 1% growth in, in expense. So to have that sum of a margin in growth over the prior year, to look forward to ending the year with a, with a positive and a significant number to, to, to add into fund balance potentially, I think we're, we're in good shape. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you, sir. I was kidding about the three minutes.
All right. No problem.
I tried to tell him you talked too long. He didn't listen. Good afternoon. I hope you are all doing well today. So I'd like to think they said the best for last, but I'm sure all of you stayed up at night and already read, read through the CAFER and you have no questions, right? Your bedtime reading stories?
Only half of it.
Half of it. So today I'm going to talk to you about our government-wide statements, our, which is your full accrual statements. That includes all your long-term liabilities and assets. You don't normally see those in your budgetary funds when you're talking about budget. Also, we'll talk about the general fund, where we ended up at year-end with fund balance and go through those different categories for your educational purposes. And we'll also discuss the water and sewer fund. These are what we consider our major funds that you really focus on when you're building your budget. So in front of you to start with, you have a summarized net position statement. And this is a condensed version, of course, of what you would actually find in our CAFER. And I want you to focus just on the total column so you can see the difference between the 2020 year-end results and the 2019. The different categories that you see here, the current and other assets, that is your current assets mean anything that doesn't have a maturity over a year old. So all of our cash and investments that are liquid are considered current. The other assets we rolled into this is also your long-term assets, which would be any cash and investments that have a maturity date out past a year. This also includes your accounts receivable balances on any property taxes that are due and/or water and sewer balances that are due. Capital asset category includes any fixed asset that we have purchased that has a value over $5,000. That's our fixed asset policy balance. And of course, as those are added on, they depreciate over time. And the majority of that increase comes from assets that were added last year for water and sewer. The deferred outflows of resources, these are really GAAP account entries that hit there for your OPEB liabilities, your retiree pension plan liabilities, all those wonderful things that we're required to show now by GASBEAN GAAP. Long-term liabilities, this is where you're going to see all of your debt that is due over the life of our bonds as well as the OPEB liability, which is around $63 million and our separation allowance liability and the elders pension liability for retirees. That's our portion from the state that has to be recorded as well. The deferred inflows is anything that we report as received but not spendable yet. For instance, any CARES Act funding we received in FY '20 that was unspent had to be categorized as a deferred inflow. So 3 million of that is actually related to the CARES funding. This net position at the bottom part, this is how we're required to break down the fund balance for net position for your full accruals. Net invested in capital assets, as you can see, is a lot less than what we actually have in assets. And the reason for that is the calculation for that takes out any debt that is owed on the actual asset. Therefore, we can't consider it a net investment at that time. Our restricted fund balance, this is any restrictions that are set by state statute based on categories or any restricted cash that we have from bond proceeds. And unrestricted here is just the net difference of the two from our total fund balance. As you can see, our total net position didn't change very much from the prior year, only about $1 million. And just to point out for your educational purposes, on the governmental activities, the total net position, we always show a deficit. And the reason for that is we carry all the debt for the schools, but we don't own any of the assets. So you're always going to see it presented that way unless policy changes. Some highlights from FY '20, we maintained our bond ratings, which is a great thing. We reduced our net OPEB liability by $9 million. This was a combination of cash contributions from the county that went into the OPEB trust as well as investment income that was earned at the trust. And we in FY '20 paid for retiree health benefits also out of our health fund. So that adds to reducing the net OPEB liability. Our long-term debt increased by $60 million. That's a result of us paying off debt and issuing new bonds also in 2020. So our year-end results are positive despite the economy and COVID, as Blake talked about before. We have a very strong tax base. Our collection rate was 99.6%. Our sales tax revenue estimates were achieved. We were very fortunate that we didn't see a decline in our sales tax revenue during COVID. Our expenditures were well managed. As Blake said, the management team knew when COVID hit, they had to do something. So they introduced the hiring freeze and restricted our training and travel. And that also helped with having positive results for 2020. So next we'll move and talk about the overall general fund results. So our revenues exceeded our budget by $243,000. Expenditures were under budget by around $12 million. So this increased our total fund balance by around 18 and a half million. And the chart indicates over time, your revenue and expenses dating back to 2010, just for a comparison of where we're at today and how revenues over and under expenditures have flowed during that timeframe. And when I talk about this general fund, I'm talking about all of our general funds combined, not just the general operating fund, just to clarify that. This next slide indicates where we ended up for fund balance and the change for each one of those funds. What we would like you to do is start to focus on general funds combined together. Of course, we like to consider our debt service sinking fund always separate because you have a dedicated tax rate for that that you've set. As well as the economic development fund, you've had a dedicated tax rate set for that debt as well. So overall, the change from the prior year was $18 million and you can see for each one of those funds where the changes came in at. So for the general fund, the increase in change in fund balance of the 4.5 was mostly attributed to us closing down internal service funds for fleet, facilities and IT. That money flowed into the general fund during FY '20. And of course, the savings in the budgeted expenditures. The schools actually used a portion of their fund balance during FY '20. We are getting ready to close down the schools radio fund. It is no longer active and needed. Countywide fire fund, you had a little bit of a decrease there. Same for EMS and of course, $12 million increase in your debt service sinking fund. And that's based on the dedicated tax rate that's already coming in, that's set for the debt service payments for the 2016 voter-approved bonds and the 2018. And then the economic development fund, the fund balance increase there was mainly because the bond proceeds that we received from, for the industrial park. So that money is still sitting there to be used for future industrial park needs. And just for your educational purposes, what do these fund balance categories mean? They start with the most restrictive and go to the least restrictive. So non-spendable, of course, is what it really means. You can't convert it to cash and spend it on anything. For us, this is inventory. We have inventory at Kane Creek Park and their store. If they don't sell it, we have to account for that at June 30th, as well as any prepaid items that we have. We have some prepaid postage that we pay throughout the year. The restricted fund balance category is restricted by external parties or state statute. For us, this is any grants that we've received that's not spent, any accounts receivable still due, any encumbrances that are outstanding at June 30th that we roll forward. All of that is included in restricted fund balance. Committed fund balance is your commitment to your fund balance policy. So this is 20% of the next year's budgeted expenditures. So that's the majority of where your fund balance is. That's the $61 million. Assigned fund balance is anything that you as a board has taken action to assign prior to the CAFER being issued. So as of November 5th, you said we're willing to assign $2.9 million to specific projects or something that a budget amendment has come forward to you for approval for. And of course, unassigned is available for anything that you may see fit for. However, you know, I would say let it be for one-time items, not to use to spend your expenditures just for operations going forward. So when you're looking at a budget request for FY '22, I would say if you could focus on the unassigned general fund balance and maybe think about what it is you might want to use that unassigned fund balance for, for one-time items. to use that unassigned fund balance for, for one-time items.
Here, let me get back to previous slide. Explain to me what the schools' fund balance restricted and unrestricted is.
Restricted is their accounts receivable balance that's due for property taxes. Unassigned means that's really unassigned and can be used for anything. What they have considered in the past for their, that's their true-up money.
But it's uncollected yet.
The restricted portion is uncollected, yes. So there's a calculation that's done for that, that takes into consideration how much cash is in that fund less, less the accounts receivable to get to that restricted amount. Any further questions before I move on? And I didn't want to spend a lot of time talking about each category and revenue and expenditures, because I knew Blake would already do that. And so this is just an illustration that's actually out of our PAFER to show a graph of what percentage of our revenues comes from where. And of course, our largest is property taxes, followed by sales taxes, and then followed by our internal governmental revenues. Next is also an illustration for our expenses. Of course, no surprise, the majority of expenses are for education, followed then by public safety, then by human services, and of course, debt service expenditures. And then we'll talk about water and sewer fund now. So for FY '20, their operating revenues for the water and sewer fund were $56 million. Total operating expense, excluding depreciation, was $31 million. So they had an increase in net position of around $16 million. And as you can see, over time, this chart illustrates dating back to 2014, how the operating revenues have steadily increased, while operating expenditures have remained fairly flat. They've increased a little bit, but not tremendously. And this is based on the historical rate increases that were put into place, so we could start preparing for the Yadkin River Project and the bond issuance that we're actually working on now. So this is a net position, rolled-up summary again, for water and sewer, for their income statement. And so this, if you look back at 2016 through 2020, you can see again, their operating income has increased. This is on a full accrual basis, so this operating revenues and expense includes depreciation. So you're looking at total net position in this presentation here. So their increase in that position was mainly attributable to, of course, the rate increase that was put into place in FY '20, once in July and then once in January. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have.
What was the loss on joint venture, I think it was?
So that's the, so that is our joint venture with Catawba River Water Treatment Plant. They provide to us their audited financial statements, and we have to do an adjusted entry for our half of that share.
And in terms of long-term debt, I know most of that, of course, is bond issuance, but what portion of that is installment debt, and what is basically that installment debt?
I don't have those percentages with me, but in the notes to the CAFER, it's all broken out. And I can provide that, highlight it, and provide it to you if you would like.
Okay. Thank you.
That operating loss with Catawba River, was that anything to do with the algae bloom that we experienced mid-year?
Not that I'm aware of. I could follow up and ask for more information. They have to record full accruals liabilities, just like we do for their employees. There could have been a change in their OPEB liabilities or retirees' pension, as well as ours. They could have had a drop in their cash at the time that they did their statements, based on timing of when they're paying for costs also.
Algae bloom was an unexpected expenditure.
It was, wasn't it?
Yes, it was unexpected, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you, Beverly Blake and Van, for those presentations, and the concise way that they were, were put together. As Michelle said earlier, at the beginning of this meeting, we will be having a series of these budget meetings and updates through the adoption, through the time in which the budget is adopted. If there are any topics that you would like for us to cover in these update meetings, we would be more than happy to do so. We just need to know what those are, so that we can prepare for the, for the next meeting. So if there's, there's any, any topics that come to mind right now, we would be glad to hear from the board on those. Otherwise, if you have topics that you would like to hear about at the next meeting, and you may not have those in mind right now, you can certainly reach out to either Michelle or myself, and we'd be glad to have those presentations put together for you. But do you, any of you have any topics, budget-related topics that are on your minds right now, that you would like for us to prepare for you at a future date?
None.
Okay. Then we're just going to proceed with our normal presentation process, because we do have some of ours that we've already put together and in mind to bring to the board to update you, so you are fully informed on what our financial position is and what we're forecasting to do in the, what we're looking for in the budget. Michelle, do you have any other comments at this point? Brian, do you have anything for the board at this time?
Yes, sir.
Patrick, do you have anything for the board at this time?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for you today.
Well, I personally, we've observed staff adjusting to the changing events of this past year, and the presentation today demonstrated that you were very thoughtful, and one of the reasons that Union County this past year hadn't skipped a beat in providing the services that our citizens expect, and for that, staff, manager and staff, we'd like to thank you for your diligence.
Thank you. Got other questions? All right. Motion to close. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Thank you.